Good evening and welcome to Have We Got Planning News For You. Thank you everybody for joining us, both on the live stream and subsequent viewers on YouTube, Spotify, etc. Can I make the usual reminder first up to consider making a donation to charity in lieu of a registration fee? There's a range of charities we now support which we put on our website. They include but are not limited to Shelter for the Housing Crisis, Brian May's Save Me Trust for the Wildlife Crisis and the GoFundMe Ukraine page for the Ukrainian crisis, but a range of other charities too, including in relation to the energy crisis on our webpage. We are extremely pleased this evening to welcome Buzzword Grant. Good evening, Head of Planning at Leicester City Council. Can I start by asking you the usual questions? Where are you at the moment? What, if anything, are you drinking? And what have you chosen as our theme for this evening?
Well, thanks very much for having me. I am drinking a nice glass of Sauvignon Blanc, half full at the moment. I like to try and keep my Barcella full at all times. I'm actually in West Bridgford, near Nottingham, at the moment. Lived and worked in Nottingham for quite a long time. And in terms of my theme, I struggled with this a bit, but I thought it'd be nice to try and choose something that was reflective of the challenges that face us. So my theme is, I guess, difficult planning choices. And I don't know whether you can see that as that pops up. So I'm from Rochdale originally. And I guess planning for me is about taking difficult decisions. When I was back home at Christmas, this space, public space in front of the town hall, I just thought was a remarkable investment in front of one of the best buildings in the country. However, my dad and his mates in Wetherspoons think it's dreadful because they've lost lots of car parking and it's a real problem in the area. So I guess I'm hoping that in due course, the planners who made that brave decision will get the benefit of my dad and his mates' approval. But I think at the moment, it's a bit contentious.
Amen to that, Gra. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Your game's going to be led by Sasha in the second half of the show. As I always say to our guests, no obligation to comment on anything in the first half, but equally, if it piques your interest, do jump in. And now to introduce the panel. Mary, you're somewhere different today.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Not in, not in Targany either.
No, I'm in Leeds. I am in the Marriott Hotel in Leeds where the snow is sort of trying to come down, but not quite. And I was running with the brave decisions theme. And because of course I'm going to another rugby match tomorrow, I brought this with me to Leeds. Because I'm on the basis of Steve Borthwick's selection. So going tomorrow. Cheers. Lovely to see you all and you especially, Gra.
We all seem to be in different places this evening. Paul, where are you? You're so embarrassed by where you are. You're obliqueing it.
No, I'm at home. In terms of brave planning, so I've spent the last couple of weeks at Inquiry in Durham, which is only about 20 minutes down the road from me. So I thought at five past five, I can just about make it home, which would normally be 20 minutes. And in the sleet and the rain and the traffic, I was cutting it fine. I thought I might have to be pulling over to the hard shoulder. But no, I'm here. I'm at my home. And then in terms of the theme, I was told it was being brave. That's what I'd taken from our meeting, Gra. So I thought I'd have, this is the Spitfire, or the model of the Spitfire, and you see it's broken as we moved house. My wife bought me a flight in a two-seater Spitfire, where I got the opportunity to fly it about four years ago, over the White Cliffs of Dover. I did a victory roll over the Battle of Britain Memorial. And I've flown a Spitfire. That's the bravest thing I've done.
I thought you were going to say the bravest thing you've done was to embark upon your own renovation project in your beautiful house. I can imagine that. It's the year 2056 and Paul's halfway through the renovations.
Well, my midlife crisis is buying a listed building and then renovating it childly. Yours is buying another car.
Yeah. I'm not going to talk about cars. We're not allowed to talk about those. Sasha, you're in a hotel room somewhere too.
I am. I think obviously hotel designers love green because Mary's in Leeds, you're somewhere else, and I'm in York. I've actually got Yorkminster behind me. But I can't talk about planning brave decisions because of course all my cases are such slam dunkers in favour of my clients that I don't really relate to that. But my brave decision, unlike Mary's chosen Twickenham, I'm on my way to Bonnie Scotland to support the mighty Scots beating the French on Saturday. So that's my brave decision, rather than watching England lose on Saturday, I fear. But we'll see. I hope not. We'll see.
Good to see you. And Chris, back at home.
Yeah, I'm at home, just as Paul is at home. And so I'm in a listed building that somebody else renovated, Paul. That is a lot easier as a route. I'm being brave. Look, I've got a log burner on. They're going to ban those soon, aren't they? So that's brave. And also, I have this on my walls. Lord Denning, I thought he was brave. He often tried to find the right result rather than what the law said. Lawyers making the right results happen, and judges as well. I'm here with presumption, and he's been very brave. He's trying quad biking.
Well, I'm somewhere in Oxfordshire. I won't say exactly where. I think there's quite a few of the team I'm working with watching this. And I think they would agree, it was a very brave decision of us all not to check out of our hotel and stay somewhere else. It's a lovely place, really. Anyway, without further ado, Chris, you're going to introduce the news. So over to you.
I am. I am. There's lots happening. First up, we've had an addition of the PPG update and that chapter 68 concerning housing supply and delivery. We've got a new paragraph 55, and that tells us that both the five-year and the four-year supply should be demonstrated against the authorities' five-year housing land supply requirement. So we've got that very clearly stated in the PPG. We also have the second round of transitional arrangements concerning the LIRA. That's come in. And we have now, it's enacting various provisions, section 94, National Development Management Policies. It tells us what they are, although that isn't very illuminating when you actually look at it. Street votes are being enacted, but like many of these things, it's all subject to regulations which haven't yet been brought into force. But something close to my heart is section 123, and that's in relation to self-build and custom-build housing. And these are the new regulations that say that a new permission only counts towards the register of self-build and custom-build housing if it is explicitly stated in the planning permission itself. So it's no good counsel. This is to get around the problem of councils just saying, not yours, Gra, I'm sure, but saying anything that is smaller than 10 units is automatically self-built when it patently isn't. And also, the provisions relating to cumulative unmet need for self-build, if you don't meet the need in the particular period that's covered by the base years, then that is accumulated. So it's like having a shortfall for self-build, and means that more and more of the demand will probably be met previously. You just dropped off the list. And then biodiversity net gain, obviously Sasha covered this. This comes in on the 12th of February, and the larger schemes, 2nd of April for smaller schemes. But interestingly, as Angus Walker has noted, it doesn't come in for development consent orders, not until November 2025. So that provision being kept away from DCOs for nationally significant infrastructure projects. And then finally, Michael Gove today, acknowledging that affordable housing registered providers are under a great deal of pressure at the moment. That is causing a lot of difficulties with the delivery of housing and indeed on cross subsidised sites. So at least the Secretary of State is recognising the problems with registered providers at the moment. And that is the news.
Thanks very much indeed, Chris. Now, I'm going to take the first case. And it's a decision dated the 31st of January, refusing an appeal by Wolf Asset Management against the decision of Airwash Borough Council for outline a scheme of up to 196 dwellings in a place called Stanton Old Dale. And I think that's come up on the screen now. And the site was on an area of greenfield which wasn't Greenbelt, but was proposed in an emerging all strategy review to be included within the Greenbelt. There were six main issues defined by the inspector, which included locational sustainability, impact on character appearance and landscape, impact on designated heritage assets, whether the proposal would undermine the plan-making process, the emerging core strategy review, whether it would be contrary to the emergence core strategy review, and if so, what weight should be given to that, and various other points. It's fair to say the inspector didn't like the scheme. He basically found against the appellants for almost all the reasons relied upon by the council. It's a long decision, and rather than talk you through each aspect of it, I'm going to draw attention to four features of the decision which seem to me to be of particular interest. And let you read, those who are interested, read the rest of it in your own time. The first point of interest is the inquiry was held on the 9th to 11th and 15th to 16th of August 2023. The site visit was on the 17th of August 2023, but the decision not issued until January 2024. And I mean, it's in no way a criticism of the inspector himself, but there does seem at the moment to be a bit of a pattern of appeal decisions, both inquiries and hearings, taking considerably longer than historically they have, and dare I say, they're meant to take post-hearing stroke inquiry until the decision is issued. Certainly might, but I've had one come out this week where the hearing was in September. There's various others where the inquiries were in September, October, undetermined, etc. Given the pace at which hearings and inquiries come on in position of dates, people losing their representation, etc., it's a little unfortunate that they're taking so long to come forward. Is there a problem in the system? Is there a lack of resources, etc.? Who knows? But it does seem to me to be a systemic issue at the moment with the inspector, and this decision is illustrative of that. If I was the appellant in that case, I'd be a little bit miffed if I'd had to wait some six months to have a decision of this nature. The second point relates to sustainability. And at paragraph 47 of the decision, the inspector considers the test in what was then, paragraph 109 of the framework, I think that's why the old numbers has just been changed. Anyway, where there's reference to a genuine choice of transport modes, and the appellant had relied upon that, saying, well, all we need to do is provide a choice. You can't force people to drive by car. Tick, locomotive splits aren't necessary. And he said this, well, whilst it's correct that the requirement is for a genuine choice, that shouldn't be taken to mean the site meets the test, simply because it's theoretically possible for some people, or a few, to undertake a journey in a sustainable means. The objective of reducing reliance on the private car, etc., will be difficult to achieve unless the choice in question is one that a reasonable number of people generally and realistically are likely and able to make. He didn't go on to say what a reasonable number meant, but that's an interesting statement of principle. Some of you will agree, some of you will disagree with that. But it's interesting to see him bramble with what paragraph 109 means. Then on prematurity, paragraph 119 of the decision deals with that. And the respective approach to prematurity was given the fact that the site was in an area that was supposed to be included within the Greenbelt, and that that inclusion of areas such as this within the Greenbelt was quite a fundamental part of the plan. If the appeal was allowed, he thought it was highly probable that the council would need to return to an earlier stage of the plan preparation work to reconsider some aspects of the strategy of the plan, the settlement hierarchy. And that was what he found to be the prejudice to the plan. We're told obviously by the framework that you have to show that the plan-making process would be undermined to sound a complaint of prematurity. And it was the fact that they'd probably have to go back a step or two in the plan-making process in light of the grant of permission that was the prejudice. So again, quite an interesting formulation of what prejudice in the context of prematurity is. Again, some will agree, some will disagree with it, but it's interesting to see him bramble with the point of principle. And then lastly, in, right at the end, when he's expecting the planning balance, in the context of a five-year housing land supply of 2.65 years, the inspector gives moderate weight to the delivery of market housing by the scheme. One might find that a little surprising. The basis on which the inspector does that is to say that the benefit of new housing through the scheme is countered by the need to sort of ensure new housing is sustainable, which he found this wasn't. But he later goes on to weigh sustainability against the scheme. And this does come up in time to time in appeals. And it's always seemed to me that one doesn't reduce the amount of weight to a benefit because of some disbenefit, only then to weigh the reduced benefit against the disbenefit again, because that's actually double counting the disbenefit. So that seems to me to be a questionable, dare I say, with the greatest respect, approach to the planning balance. I doubt it will make a difference in that case because the scheme was completely slaughtered by the decision. So it doesn't seem to me to be likely to find a legal challenge. But I would certainly would generally caution against that decision-makers and indeed those acting for appellants and others, discounting or reducing the weight to be given to a benefit by reference to disbenefit. Keep the benefits on one side of the scales and the disbenefits on the other seems to me the more sensible way of dealing with it. Anyway, that's the airwash case. And now I think we go to Mary, who's going to take us from Derbyshire to St Albans.
Indeed. I'm going to take you to Coley Heath and another unsuccessful decision, but this time in the Greenbelt. And can I just say, Charlie, in defence of PINS, don't forget that because of the introduction of the new PP, sorry, the MPPF, you know, there's been this process of letter writing to everyone saying, you know, giving people a chance to make reps. So that has undoubtedly held up, appeal decisions being issued, I would say.
Although they might be a better decision by before December if they had an inquiry in August.
Well, maybe. So in fairness, this is an example of an application for up to 150 dwellings refused in May 23, inquiry September 23, around a correspondence and indeed a statement of common ground between the appellant and the council about the effect of the latest version of the MPPF. So, and you can see that this is an appeal by Vistry Homes. And you can see that they had a very experienced inspector dealing with this, Mr Hagan. And the critical issue was agreed to be whether or not very special circumstances exist. Because St Albans had undergone a Regulation 18 consultation, this was a case post, as a result of the new MPPF, of applying the four-year housing land supply, not the five-year. So this is an interesting early example of that. But in the context of the main issues here, and Rob, can you just bring up the plan to give everybody a little sense? Coley Heath was described as a small nucleated village composed of three triangular clusters, and the appeal site lay to the south of one of these clusters. And you can see there the layout. So the inspector identified the main issues, impact on openness and purposes of the Greenbelt, number one issue. He noted that the site comprised of a dwelling and some stables. So the existing build development was only 3.8% compared to a developable area of about 52%. He judged that there would be a significant impact on openness and that this site was visible from various roads and public rights of way, and that it made an important contribution to the rural setting of the village. He felt that with regard to purpose, it would be a significant incursion on urban development into the open countryside, and so he found substantial harm against that key, one of the key purposes of the Greenbelt. With regard to landscape, character and appearance, this is an example, and I think actually your appeal decision, Charlie, is another example. This is an example of an inspector disagreeing not only with the appellant's LVIA assessment, but also some of the planning judgements that the council reached. And so in this respect, the inspector took a harsher line than even the council had taken with regard to some of the viewpoints. And so I'm afraid, again, this did not help the appellant at all because he found that there would be substantial adverse effects from various viewpoints in year one, and that would reduce to only moderate impacts. But that was still more than the appellant was advocating. There was also an issue about the effect on designated heritage assets, although that was regarded as very minor because in the relevant part of the site, the developer kept the levels down low and promoted bungalows in that location. So that was a less than substantial impact, and the planning balance didn't go the wrong way, as it were. Interestingly, there was another point taken about whether the site was sustainable in transport terms. And there were services within the village. There was a preschool, primary school, post office, shop, hairdressers. You had to go further afield for secondary employment and healthcare. But what really bothered the inspector was the cycling provision, which was, quote, incoherent, indirect and unsafe. And secondly, he thought that the access to medical facilities was inadequate, the public transport access. There was no direct bus service. You would have to catch at least two buses. And so he took the view that whilst those two aspects were not sufficient to warrant refusal on their own, they nevertheless were enough to weigh against, in sustainability terms, the merits. There were some other issues, but highways in terms of the generation of traffic, blood risk, all neutral. He gave, notwithstanding the sustainability point, Charlie, just to go back to your point, he gave very substantial weight to the open market and affordable housing. He gave substantial weight to custom build, moderate weight to biodiversity net gain. There was also a little interesting argument about the fact that there was a bit of, that land was PDL. He said, in terms, when it comes to Greenbelt cases, either if you're PDL, you're within 154G exceptions, in which case it's not inappropriate development, you don't need to prove very special circumstances. But it wasn't an additional point to be weighed in the planning balance in a positive way if, like these appellants, you were way out of 154G. And they were relying on an appeal decision in a case called Maitland, but that was not a very special circumstances case. So all in all, for very clear reasons, no very special circumstances, contrary to the development plan, refused.
Thanks, Mary. Interesting case. Now, Paul, you're going to take us to Basildon District and my senior clerk's hometown of Billerica.
Yeah, which I'm told is in Essex. I'll have to get up three times before I open my mouth today. And it's a decision now of Mr Inspector Jonathan Price, who obviously shares a name with one of the country's greatest actors. And if you ever want something to entertain yourself, listen to the outtakes of War of the Worlds where Richard Burton cannot pronounce the word Billericay, and he pronounced it Billuricay with the emphasis on the i. It's fantastic. But this is a four-day inquiry which took place in December of 2023, the opposite to the spectrum to the one that you described, Charlie, because this is where the inquiry closed on the 19th of December. There was the opportunity given for the parties to make written reps on MPPF, and the decision was issued on the 23rd of January. So this is razor sharp on the part of Mr Inspector Price, who dismissed an appeal for a residential scheme in the Greenbelt, outline consent sought for 150 dwellings and a 50-bed care home on a site called Potash Road just outside Billerica. It's a non-determination appeal, as you can see from the head note that's on the screen. There were four putative reasons for refusal issued. By the time that the case came to the inquiry, there were only two left standing, one of which was whether there was mitigation proposed in respect of ecology, and beautifully described just before paragraph 23, I think it is, is the headline of whether there's an adverse effect upon the dormouse, the use of the definite article, presumably there is a singular dormouse who needed protecting, which I guess is one of those typos for which some correction needs to be made in due course. But the real issue is very special circumstances. And spoiler alert, this is a case where the inspector concluded the very special circumstances were not made out, and that the impact in relation to Greenbelt outweighed the needs which have been demonstrated. Now, why does that make this interesting? It makes it interesting for a couple of reasons. The first of which is the need was 1.5, there was only 1.5 years of general market housing as against a five-year land supply in that case, even post-MPPF. There was an affordable housing shortfall, accumulated shortfall of 4,841 against a likely delivery of 76 in the next five years. And there was also an established need in relation to care home occupation in terms of meeting the needs of the elderly. In other words, a gross failure of the development plan system to plan for the local needs. It was a substantial need. And the inspector described it as a substantial need, with no real likelihood of it being addressed in the development plan any time soon. And this is a site where there's no public right of way crossing it. So there's no real visual impacts on the Greenbelt, well screened. In fact, it's only described as having visual effect, but that there was a substantial landscape character effect and a substantial effect on the openness of the Greenbelt. And it follows on, and this is the other interesting thing, from no less than three previous appeals, where the needs which are described there were considered to outweigh the harm to Greenbells. Those are sites at Kennel Lane, Maitland Lodge and Dunston Road between, where are we, 2022 and December 2023. So it's a run of those cases where there had been successes and demonstration of very special circumstances on a case where it's reasonably well enclosed. But it's post the new MPPF, and it's difficult to avoid the inference that the reason why there was a difference of view taken there was firstly, obviously site specifics, every case will depend on its merits, but also the increased emphasis about not releasing Greenbelt to meet needs. Who knows whether or not this is some sort of sea change of relations, the way in which the planning balance is drawn. But it is quite startling that it comes after a run of three on the bounce. So an interesting case, and happily, the dormouse is safe.
Thank you very much for the single one. Now, I do like the comment. Somebody said, Chris, they found something you said quite funny. Chris Young, he was quite funny. Over to you, Sasha, to introduce our guest.
Thank you very much. Before I do, I forgot to tell you as an aside in my introduction that I travelled all the way to Doncaster today to see part of my horse that I own run. And I went to the paddock, saw it, and then the race was promptly abandoned. So really worthwhile trip to watch the horse for 10 seconds before the race was abandoned. So
Which part do you own about that?
Sorry?
Which part do you own?
The little toenail on the left hoof.
All the other half, are they?
I was going to say the trials and tribulations, goodness me, of horse owners.
Anyway, actually, when the horse saw me, he did seem a bit perturbed, which wasn't very encouraging. But there we go. Gra, delighted to have you. Thank you so much for coming on. And it really is great to have one of the doyens of the planning system on Have We Got Planning News For You. And I should introduce you. I think it's fair to say you've had an incredibly distinguished career principally in local government. You graduated from Newcastle University, and it's quite impressive you lived to tell the tales of the 1980s in Newcastle, being a student there. One night, we'll ask you about your memories, whatever remained of the memories. But then you obviously went into local government. You had huge success. You became Head of Planning at Nottingham. You then went to Liverpool, where you had the misfortune to work with Paul at various stages, as I understand it. And then you went to Leicester just in time to see the premiership arrive in 2016. And you've been Head of Planning for 10 years there. And I think it's frankly worth saying, an extraordinary career. So let me just ask, I'd obviously like to ask you a few things about, you know, about your professional you know, about your professional career. I've given the hard bones of it, but just give us from your view, put some fat on those bones, please.
Well, yeah, thanks very much. And it's it's great to be here. Yeah, I enjoyed my five years at Newcastle. I enjoyed my year out at North Tyneside. And I think I probably learned more in the year out than I did in the other four years, if I'm if I'm honest. Yeah, I came to Nottingham expecting to stay a couple of years. I think that was in the late 80s. But really enjoyed about 25 years here and found I really worked through a really interesting period. I mean, the early days was very challenging in terms of riots and the the inner city regeneration challenges were huge. Learned a lot from working in things like the inner area programme and very formative times. And I really enjoyed working in like multifunctional teams. But I became, I guess, more focused on city centre work and transport work. And one of the biggest changes that I experienced in the career is when Nottingham gained Uniti status. So we really took over strategic planning, transport from the county as was. And I really had a great time looking, working with some great colleagues, reconfiguring the city centre, dealing with huge interesting challenges like introducing the tram, workplace parking levy, and actually trying to integrate planning and transport. That was a big, it remains a big passion, passion of mine. I had a couple of years in Liverpool. That's a couple of years in Liverpool, set of plannings like dog years at Kensington, almost like 10 years really. But I really enjoyed my time up there. But came back to the Midlands. And actually, I can't believe I've never been in Leicester for 10 years. Great city. And I guess, yeah, I've been very fortunate to work in three cities where the amazing assets, but amazing responsibility, I think, to actually, I guess, look after the and look after the sort of stewardship of those cities. And again, try and facilitate growth in a way that really respects those places. But yeah, I've really enjoyed it. Thank you for your kind words.
Then tell us why, what led you down to studying planning and making a career in planning? What? How come?
Just that goes back to Rochdale. And my step granddad, David Blaw, was the borough planner of Rochdale. He was a very, he was a great guy. He very lovely man, very, very capable, qualified, I think, as planner and architect and a surveyor. And again, I found him very inspirational. And so he sort of, I guess, he piqued my interest. They also used to drive a gold coloured Capri with metallic finish, which was very impressive to a young, 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 impressionable sort of 10 year old. And I think, but I do remember, I used to go to the market with my mum. And actually, I remember when the market was redeveloped in the, I think it was in the early 70s, I was really intrigued by the sort of change and the and the and the scale of change. And I just thought this is, I guess, if only quite disturbing. And I just thought this, how does this happen? I remember it affected me quite a lot. And David was working on that. So I guess I was, I was inspired by him. And again, I, I've never regretted it.
Hmm. And tell us now, let's, let's go to the present. And and this about your planning department and the challenges that you're facing Leicester City. What's, what's, what are the things that are causing you most sleepless nights, if anything?
Well, the city's a great city. I guess it's, I guess, we, it's very, the boundaries are very tightly drawn. We got, we, I guess, the policy challenge for us is obviously, how do we accommodate growth in a way that respects the heritage? 2000 year old history of Leicester, you know, Roman city, twice as old as Liverpool, actually, and really, a really fascinating place. So getting good growth, managing urban design in a way that actually respects the place, but also allows the place, the space to meet as much of our needs as possible, is is really important. But all that relies upon having, having really good staff. And I guess, I think the biggest issue for me, I think, is, is actually, you know, retaining and and getting good staff. So I think it's a national issue that's problematic for everybody. And I think the, I guess, one of the things that we have to do in terms of making sure we, I guess, just can can deal with the the challenges of of the development pressures is to is to work in in close partnership with with, you know, with districts and the county and to actually manage those those growth pressures in a way that actually allow us to make the most of Leicester, but actually retain its character and make sure that we deal with that growth in a responsible way. But in terms of losing sleep, I think the biggest issue, I think, is 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 staff. And I guess budgets as well, obviously, that the, our income has not recovered from COVID. I think, like most, most other places, I think the economic conditions are really problematic and challenging. And that does, that does put pressure on all councils from us, I guess, a corporate's perspective as much as a, as a planning perspective.
Well, just tell us, because obviously, you've now had quite a serious length of time as head of planning. Are resources relatively significantly diminished from 10 years ago when you started?
I think in Leicester, we're really fortunate that we've managed to protect resources. At the moment, we're trying to invest the the planning fee uplift in, in effectively regrading the planners within the service. So we, and I think that's, a lot of that is down to the the political leadership who understand, I think, and appreciate the importance of planning. So I'm very fortunate, been very fortunate in Leicester. I can't, I can't say that's been the case everywhere. I've had to deal with, you know, difficult situations in, in other places where I've worked. But we've managed to sustain our resources. But I do see some pressures elsewhere, locally and further afield, where, where, again, I think it's probably the worst I've known in terms of financial pressures on councils. And that's actually quite, can be quite draining, I think. I think there's also, there's a sort of a, there's a, I guess, a health and wellbeing aspect to it as well. It worries people. And again, we, I think the, the nature of how, the uncertainty of things like section 114 is around the corner, and how, how, how people can be confident in their, in their careers and their professions. I think it's, it's about understanding that there are actually personal pressures as much as the professional ones. So yeah, it's, it's tough, it's tough.
Just still also practically, I mean, if you get a reasonably senior member leave for whatever reason, how, how difficult is it to get a suitable and appropriate replacement in the current climate?
Almost impossible in terms of the, the people with experience. I mean, if you think about the nature of having to negotiate, I don't know, a city centre scheme, which is a, is a, you know, a challenging scheme, controversial. And again, the complexity of planning and the complexity of the evidence, the complexity of our world, it didn't used to do that a long time ago. But to be able to marshal and master those, you know, those competing demands and deal with the technical aspects, reconcile the competing pressures of those technical aspects. And I think that, I think planners, planners are very good at that. But actually getting people who are experienced enough to manage, manage those pressures, come to that judgment, they've got to be resilient, you know. So I think, I think, so what we've, what we've been doing, we've grown our own. And I think we're very fortunate to have some fantastic graduates who are already stepping up to the plate in terms of taking on major applications and dealing with, dealing with, you know, that, you know, moving up to that sort of senior level. Because I think everybody's looking for the same, looking for the same sort of cohort of experienced staff. And we're struggling to compete with, 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 with the private sector rates, I think. So yeah, it's, it's, it's very tough. And I think, but I'm sure we're not the only ones to to say that.
Well, it definitely seems a recurrent theme. Now, tell us, what about the, the mayor, you know, that you've got? As I understand it, you do have an elected mayor, and they obviously have an influence on the planning department. I know you have to be slightly cautious, just so you don't get a visitor at about 9:01 tomorrow morning. But just tell us broadly, what, what's your impressions of that?
I mean, I think the elected, elected mayor, as long as it's got the right geography, that I guess, having that focus, having that, the resources, I think he's really, he's really, really powerful. I mean, we're very fortunate. I mean, Sir Peter Salisbury, the elected mayor in Leicester, actually was made an honorary member of the RTPI about a few years back, which, I mean, he gets planning, he gets heritage. So he, he actually, and I think he's, I guess, there's two answers to the question. He's got an extremely active role in the strategic planning, the strategic planning aspects of the job. I mean, only, only this morning, he signed the, he personally signed the statement of common ground in respect of our own met need. So in terms of representing the city within the partnership that I mentioned earlier, he's, he's front and centre of that. But obviously, he's very careful, very scrupulous not to get involved in the quasi judicial aspects of development management and planning committee. But I did, I did find myself sometimes to get a bit embarrassed, because if a shangbi were on the city, his knowledge of the heritage and the history is better than mine. So I just, I just, I, I let him, let him actually, I guess, represent some of the, the knowledge of the city. So but I think a lot of that comes down to politicians who, I guess, if you've got stable politics, he's been around quite a long time, then you can, I think that becomes a really, a really powerful thing. I, I'm glad I don't work for an authority where there is a third, a third, a third, where the membership is changed is such a lot. Because you know, to be able to do good things, difficult things, it takes time. So I think having a, having a stable leader does, 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 does any dividends.
And what, what, just let me ask you, what, in terms of your, obviously, you've been at local authorities for a significant period of time, what's been the biggest change in members that you've noticed?
I think, I suppose the, the nature of things like elected mayors do change the context for the rest of the membership. And, but I, I, looking at, I guess, the different models of, of leadership. I think the, the, obviously politicians are going to be ambitious. They want, they want to be able to make a difference. And I guess there's, there's things like the new, the new Devo deals, the new combined authorities, there's, there's a massively changing context. And I think that actually is, is, I guess, is changing the roles. And that may be changing the nature of people who are, who are drawn to get into politics. I mean, if you think about the, the, I guess, what, what used to happen when I started, members would go beyond committees, and you get, you become the vice chair of a committee, there'd be progression to become quite an experienced member, you then become a chair of a committee. So there was actually, I think, that, that sort of, that, that, I guess, that career progression for, for councillors, I think, has actually changed very significantly. I think actually to some, to some extent, that's actually quite a problem, because you might find that the more ambitious career politicians feel that actually, there's a more limited, limited scope of roles at the top table, I guess. So that, you know, but I, yeah, I think the, the nature, the nature of politics, it's always been a political job. And again, I think I've worked with some fantastic politicians throughout my career.
Hmm. And now tell me about the future, looking into the future. And again, with the benefit of your experience, what, what do you see as the kind of, the key problems that you're likely to face in the next five years in your department?
Well, that's quite more than department. I guess, I just think the climate challenge and the, and the, I guess, the ecological challenge we're facing is absolutely huge. I mean, when you, for a city like Leicester, things like retrofit, it's quite difficult. Reconciling the built heritage with the environmental challenges is really, really important. If you think about, there's big problems in terms of energy, big problems in terms of the national grid, the local grid distribution. I think we're exposed to flooding risks. So I think, I think, I'd characterize probably the environmental challenge as being the biggest thing that, that really, that the country has got to get, get, get to get on top of. And I think, I guess, I'm a bit disappointed by the nature of how the national legislation for decades has not really been, has set, has set that bar high enough. So I think that's probably the biggest thing that my successors will really have to, have to resolve. And that's huge, hugely significant. I suppose the other thing, what I mean, it seems like, I guess, the change in nature of the city centre, the change in nature of how we work. Yeah, so there's, there's some really significant, I guess, planning changes that the, and in order for us to respond to that, I think we need to be, we need to be open minded. We need to look at new technology. We need to look at, look at what, how other places are doing that better, you know.
And what, what do you think about, in that context, the new MPPF? I mean, let's, obviously, in the context of Leicester, what do you think about the approach of government to the housing requirement for Leicester? Is it fair, reasonable, unreasonable, too demanding? What's your view?
Well, I promised myself I wouldn't swear, so I'm not going to swear. But I mean, I think in terms of the, the city's uplift, you know, the 35%, I just think it's, and again, I don't want to talk too, too specifically about the city in terms of where we are in our, in our, in our process. But the nature of how the city's uplift, how that is expected to be met in cities that are very tightly bounded, that where the capacity isn't there. But it's also about the fact there's no real sensible application of, I guess, policy, you know, policy propositions in terms of housing demand and looking at how that, how that should be met in cities across the country. And I think the MPF, the new MPF, obviously, with, I mean, we're, we're used to change, we'll deal with that change. But actually, I'm more concerned about what's not in the MPF. I mean, things like, what, what do we do with unmet need in the context of what does this new policy alignment test mean that's going to replace the duty to cooperate? You know, what's going to replace, how's the standard methodology going to be updated? I just think this, this little MPF is actually a bit of a staging post to a much bigger issue in terms of the new planning system. And so I guess, and that's, that's the real, that's the real question for me as well, is how is the new system going to be, going to evolve? But I guess we've got another consultation to go through on the proper MPF revision, which, which again, is, I assume is going to happen sometime this year, potentially.
Potentially. What, what about your own personal experience in duty to cooperate? Obviously, you're in very close proximity to other quite significant cities and administrative areas. How have you found the duty to cooperate?
Well, I just think, I mean, if you take away strategic planning, which is a total nonsense, you've got to replace it with something. A duty to cooperate is, is a really poor substitute for, for proper strategic planning, where you align infrastructure with growth and plan things properly. I mean, so the duty to cooperate, I think, is, is, is problematic. And it's the sort of stop go thing actually is, is, is difficult and harsh. But actually, you do need something that's got teeth in order for it to be effective. And what I'd say is, you know, again, we've managed to secure, and we've got a really good planning partnership with the districts and the county. We've secured, I think, a remarkable level of agreement about how we want to take plenty of the, the housing market ever forward. It's a nice geography, Leicester, Leicestershire. It's like a Crystally, got a central city and towns around it. So actually, we've got a good planning partnership. The duties to cooperate, I think, we probably would have struggled to reach agreement on, on, on how we do with that unmet need without the duty to cooperate. But again, that's no substitute for, for strategic planning. And again, I, I, I think it's, I'm interested to see what, you know, what will replace it. But I suspect that we're not going to get answered that question quite quickly.
But before I hand over to my colleagues, can I just ask you lastly, and this is a bit of a spontaneous question, but I, I'd be interested. So what's your, what do you, what are you proudest of bringing about? What, what planning consequence are you proudest of bringing about? What building do you walk past and go, wow? Grant, that really wasn't a bad day's work.
I, I suppose, I suppose, I guess it's the, the comprehensive approach we did to Nottingham City Centre. I think, I mean, I worked for a great director called Adrian Jones, who had a real vision for taming the inner ring road, filling in the subways, pedestrian priority, bus priority, trams, improving the station, providing, providing a massively upgraded city centre. And I think the, the funding that we got in the, in the 90s, after Uniti status, allowed us to make a huge difference in a comprehensive way. But I think that, I can't claim the same credit for the work in Leicester, but I think the Connected Leicester scheme actually is, is as good, if not better. Well, I think better in terms of its comprehensive nature. So place, changing the, changing the nature of city centres in a way that actually just helps them become better places, changing that balance, like the, like the Tenor Square in Rochdale, is that people may, that may miss that power parking at the moment, but actually, that is a European standard square that actually people will be proud of. And I think, I think that to me is, is really what, I, I can point at a few things that I contributed to. None of it, none of it is down to me alone. All of it is down to working in, in, in significant teams with great people who've got resilience, vision, creativity. So it's difficult to point, point at one particular thing, but.
Thank you very much. Right, Chris, have you got a question for Grant, please?
I have. Grant, good evening. I think we all need to just acknowledge you're a bit of a planning hero, really. The Greater, The Greater Nottingham Combined Authorities, and then you're doing amazing work with the duty to cooperate in Leicester, you know, against all the difficulties, you managed to achieve that. And that really is my question, which is how much of national politicians made it more difficult to properly plan in recent years?
Well, I, I shouldn't really, I guess, the, the nature of politics is something that we, we work with. I mean, I, I, there have been, I guess, some positives. I guess the national fee increase is positive. And I guess the, the environment, I think biodiversity net gains are really, is going to be a real game changer. Something's going to take a lot to get around. So there's been some positives, but I just think that the, the endless change, the endless change has been really, really problematic for this, for the whole profession to deal with. And it's really interesting, if you look at, say, some of the scrutiny of committees at House of Commons, and I spoke at the House Lord Scrutiny Committee, there's some fantastic scrutiny done at Parliament. There's some fantastic scrutiny done at Parliament. There's some politicians who look at, look at the, the challenging things you have to deal with really, really in great depth and with great integrity. But I guess that, that doesn't follow through into, into some of the policymaking, which, which is inherently political. So I think that never ending change is probably the, the, the thing that I would, I would, I would really, is, is made life most difficult. And what's interesting, when you look at things like, you mentioned the Greater Nottingham Core Strategies, we were working on those line core strategies for a number of years. And, and actually, what that did is almost like finish off the RSS distribution 10 years later, you know, these things take time to work through. And, and I think the, the problem when you, when you're just refreshing, changing the, the whole system literally every year, that there's, there's, it's just, it is exhausting. And I think when you, you know, when you, when you look at things like the White Paper, I think everybody knew the White Paper was totally undeliverable politically. Yet there was still two and a half years of effort and consultations and eight, two, three days and responses. And, and look at where we are in terms of a third of an MPPF that's been presented that still isn't answering all the difficult questions. So I guess it's frustrating that actually direct change, ambitious change, quick change isn't, isn't, doesn't seem to be something that, that all, I think, that most governments struggle with it. It's not, not a part of the political point. I think it's, it's, it's a big and complex world. But I think to have a bit of stability and more incremental change, I think would pay, would pay a lot of dividends.
Interesting. Thank you.
Right. Paul?
Yeah, it's interesting. Journalists are the ones that are meant to speak truth to power. It always seems to be planners on the front line that are saying, well, do you know what? Stop reforming our, our, our system and let us try and bed something in and get stability. You know, regional planning, abolishing, that's a daft idea, almost as daft as Brexit. But you know, who's going to speak that on a national stage? So my question, it was going to be about national development management policies. But now that you've said you do these tours around Leicester for visiting celebrities, and I've come visiting celebrities, I've been a visiting celebrity to Leicester for a long period of time, and not once have you taken me on a heritage tour. Not once I seen the last Yorkshire king who happens to be buried wrongly in your city, despite the fact he's buried, been buried under a car park for 400 years. Not once. So I'll ask you the question. So you can apologize for that if you want, Grant, but more seriously, introduction of national development management policies are coming, coming over the horizon. Is that the panacea for shorter examinations and a more straightforward system? Could we reintroduce special planning behind the back door? What do you think? And can we have a king back, please?
Let's sample that. I do apologize.
I'll bring the car.
I, I, I was initially worried, I am worried by N D M Ps at to a degree. I think there's a bit of a democratic deficit if it's the Secretary of State just, just determines everything. But I do, I do think that there's an awful lot of duplication and, and I guess standard policies that could be, that could be, could be, could be, could be sorted. I guess that there needs, there needs to be the space for something spatially distinct. Moving around, university towns, university cities, student accommodation. I think our suite, suite of planning policies that deal with student issues in, say, Leicester as compared to, say, Brighton as compared to Derby or York. Yeah, they, they, they're not necessarily going to, so there needs to be, there needs to be some scope to make them space, to flex them spatially, I think. I think that the, the interesting thing, I did hear somebody make comment that potentially N D M Ps could, could potentially plug the regional planning gap, which I thought was really interesting where, because there used to be obviously RPGs that set spatial, spatial strategies for the regions. And actually, you could look at maybe regional distribution, you've got a national housing target, you could have regional housing targets, you could look at distribution, you could look at how you share that growth across HMAs within regions. And, and actually, so N D M Ps may prove to be a, a, a route to actually do that. That democratic deficit point, I think, is really important because you, you've got to make sure that all the LPAs, all the partners have, have obviously got a proper engagement in that. So I, I think N D M Ps potentially give a lot, a lot of power to the Secretary of State and the government. So that will, a lot will depend upon what the Secretary of State and the government may give that power, I guess. But I think it potentially could be something that could begin to answer some of the, some of those strategic planning gaps that we've got at the moment, if deployed, if deployed properly.
Let's hope. Thank you, Grant.
Just, just add, just because we talked about it in the news update, it is in there, Grant, in section 94 of the levelling up bill. Secretary of State can make policy for use of land in, in England or any part of England. So it is suggesting that we could have regional and subregional provisions through the national development management policies.
Thank you very much. Mary?
Thank you very much, Sasha. Grant, following on from this theme, I wanted to ask you about combined authorities. So in the context of Lura, which is continuing the expansion, as I see it, of combined authorities through introducing combined county authorities. I wonder how effective in your experience these combined authorities are in terms of advancing strategic planning. And this sort of plays to, you know, the, the power that Chris has just noted. Because these regions might reflect, for example, Liverpool and City Region, they, you know, they, that it's possible to have spatial strategies perhaps set by, by government. So anyway, what, how experienced, how effective do you think these combined authorities are? And what, what are you expecting in terms of take up from the, in terms of county combined authorities?
I probably don't want to get too close into what's happening locally in Leicester, but the central point to make is that the, the, the actual, the take up of planning powers by the combined authorities, I actually think is relatively low. So it's a bit ironic that actually, I think the, the, the opportunity isn't, isn't being taken up. And my big problem with the Devo deals and is that this shouldn't be about which areas are going to want to be engaged in a political agreement with the government and they take up special positions of, of governance. There should be a consistent approach to governance, should be, should be comprehensive. So I don't see any reason why. So I think you've got a bit of a patchwork quilt. I think you've got levels one, two, three and four of Devo deals and different combined authorities that get different rewards from the government. I just think it's a mess, if I'm honest. I think it all comes back to me to having sensible geographies and sensible governance related to those sensible geographies. And, and as I say, I, I, I'm, I'm, I, I, I think the nature of, I guess, there's, so I voted against the, the East Midlands Regional New Combined Authority. And the 43% of people who voted didn't want an elected mayor in where I live. We're going to get one this May, that's covering the whole of Derby, Derbyshire, Nottingham, Nottinghamshire. I don't see how that, 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 that role, that our focus and resource isn't going to be able to achieve things in really, in a, in a, in a way that maybe a more, a more appropriately struck governance would, would deliver. If you look at the big cities, I mean, Greater Manchester is the only place that's really done strategic planning, planning properly. And that's all down to the fact that they kept the Association of Greater Manchester Authorities, AGMA, they kept a strategic planning unit all after the abolition of the Met. So I get, it just comes back to me to, you need to have a comprehensive strategic planning system that's properly resourced and proper government. And I, I don't think combined authorities are anything like as, as, as ineffective, a, a, a layer as, as maybe a, a proper, a proper strategic planning system could be.
Thank you very much, Grant.
Thank you so much, Mary. Charlie?
Thanks, Sasha. Well, something different for me. I'm going to ask this. If you knew what you, you do now, so if you had your knowledge and experience of your current self, but you could go, you were going back in time when you were 22 at the milk ground again, would you still go into local authority work or would you choose private practice?
Yeah, no, it's an easy question. A hundred percent. I'd, I'd want to work public sector, a hundred percent. I think it's so rewarding. It is, it's, I mean, the satisfaction of being able to sort of change places, be able to point at things that wouldn't happen. There's also, we, we, there's so much effort goes into negotiation of designs and schemes that people don't see the benefits of that negotiation. You see the end result of maybe years' worth of effort. You see the first scheme that comes in at Prior. You know, I guess, yeah, so a hundred percent. It's a great question, Charlie. Thank you. Yeah. Maybe, you know, I, I would, I'd be in a bigger house with a bigger car and, but again, I would change it for the well.
By the way, I love Leicester. I've had many, many a happy time there with John Edmund and Simon Stannion and Chris May and the Marin, the former Marins crew. I think it had probably the best curry house I've ever dined at on the inquiry tour, which opposite the station, which I gather is now closed. But, but there we are. One day I write the book of, of curry houses around.
Absolutely. That new men, Grant, you can ask him the same question at the end, whether, you know, he, he thought it was a good idea to go to the bar or whether he should have been a politician.
Oh, God, leave the questions to you guys. I'm very happy with, with my life choices so far, he says, cautiously. Well, Sasha, back to you.
Well, no, thank you very much, Charlie. That, I just want to thank Grant. That was absolutely superb, incredibly informative and interesting. Thank you so much for coming on and hope we will have you back in the future when you're reached even greater heights.
Amen to that.
I really enjoyed it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Grant, from, from me too. It's been really, really insightful. We're now off. We were going to come back in, in two weeks' time. So we look forward to seeing you then. And for now, don't forget your charity donation, please, if you can consider that. And we'll see you in a fortnight's time. Good night. Take care.
Thank you, Grant.
Thanks, Grant.
All right.